Good evening, Cedar Falls. Welcome to our regular city council meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2022. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Gamfield.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember DeBoer absent. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am. First item of business will be approval of the regular meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion from council? Any from the public? Okay, so motion and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Excellent. So that does pass. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16 on the resolution calendar is being removed from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So that's a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a repair contract with Tojo Construction for a CDBG CARES Act project at 700 West Ridgeway. So we will strike that from tonight's agenda. And that moves us over to special presentations. First, I'd like to have a proclamation recognizing May 15 through 21, 2022 as National Public Works Week. So Director Shragi, if I could have you at the podium, please. So, public works sometimes are the unsung heroes out late at night doing our snow removals and trash removals, all the things that keep the city running. And it is so important every year that we celebrate the work that your team does. Just wanted to offer the sincerest thanks and congratulations to the city for the wonderful, wonderful staff we have in public works led by their stalwart director, Chase Shragi. So with that, I'll read National Public Works Week, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and waters, excuse me, and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these services and facilities. And whereas the quality and effectiveness and their of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th, 20, no, May 15th to 21, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the City of Cedar Falls. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Sign this ninth day of May, 2022, Mayor Robert M. Green. Proudly present that to you, Director Shragi.
Well, thank, thank you, Mayor, for the recognition of Public Works Week. I guess first and foremost, I'd like to thank all the public work staff members who make this happen each and every day for their hard work and dedication. Wouldn't be able to do it without them. That's part of the reason why Cedar Falls has such great services that we provide. And that's another reason why Cedar Falls is a destination city. So thank you for that, Mayor.
And last session, we had a proclamation read for TF, which is NF, neurofibromitosis. And the speaker who wanted to present, fortunately was not able to attend. So if, yeah, here we are. So TJ Warren is here to just give a few words on that. And we are so grateful that you're able to be here tonight. So the floor's yours.
Thank you, city council members and Mayor Green for having me and sharing the floor for a few minutes. I want to share a little something that's near and dear to my heart. In 2018 December, my son turned one-year-old, and all seemed well in the world. It was pretty exciting to have that one-year-old, but there were two things that that were an issue. One of them, he couldn't crawl. And the other, he had this tibial bowing in his leg. And so we became very concerned and wondering what was going on. We asked our doctor what we should do, and he sent us onto the University of Iowa Hospitals and to meet with some doctors down there. The doctor said it could be two things. It could be a bone abnormality in his leg, or it could be neurofibromitosis. And I thought that word was terrifying. And when you go out and Google this thing, which we never should do, it does become scary. But we got connected to the Children's Tumor Foundation, and sure enough, genetics confirmed he did have neurofibromitosis. He has two of the seven symptoms or characteristics of NF. And yeah, ever since then, we've been connected to this Children's Tumor Foundation to try and end this thing, to raise awareness and to raise funds for research and different medications and all kinds of different things to eliminate this thing. So Children's Tumor Foundation's mission is to end NF. A little bit about this, 2.5 million people across the world are living with it. One in 3,000 are impacted by it, in addition to their families. And it can take a different toll for each person. It can be anything from tumors on the nerves to cancer, bone abnormalities, facial deformation. It isn't ugly, ugly thing. And so I'm just really passionate about serving this. I talk to young people and people all across, you know, my work life, and I talk to them about the notion of purpose and pursuing purpose in your life. And I've struggled with that myself. I think a lot of us do. But there's one purpose that I know that I have, and that is to end NF. It has become a part of our calling, and sometimes purpose finds you. So I want to inform the entire Cedar Falls community that there is a family and multiple families here in this community that are fighting this thing. We appreciate your support. We held a walk in August of last year, Shine a Light. We're going to hold another one next year in Cedar Falls. This Shine a Light Walk will take place in August or September. And if anybody is a board gamer, I just want to emphasize that we will have a board game stream this Sunday. I'm going to be streaming 12 hours with my brother-in-law. We love board games. We use everything we can to fight this thing. We're giving away lots of board games and just having a good time raising funds and spreading awareness. So if anybody would like to come to that, I welcome it. It's at twitch.tv, and it's at board underscore at underscore home. So that's board underscore at underscore home on Twitch TV. So thank you very much for your time. Thanks for reading the proclamation a couple of weeks ago and helping us fight. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Certainly a heartbreaking condition. And in Cedar Falls, we'll be very happy to continue issuing this proclamation every year until NF is cured. So with that, that was our two proclamations, and it brings us over to public forum, where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to, germane to city business. If you would like to speak, please come to the podium with your name and address. And if you are looking to speak on a topic that we're going to be covering anyway, I might suggest waiting until that time so it can be included all in those same remarks. But you're welcome to use both opportunities if you like. So does anyone wish to speak generally in public comment? Yes, Mr. Sharp, name and address for the record, please.
Rick Sharp, 1623 Burt Street, Cedar Falls. So two things here. The first, I'd like to council and the mayor to reconsider for the public forum to offer an additional segment at the end of the council meeting, strictly so the public can talk about matters that happened at that council meeting. The reason for that, so that we can have some clarity on some of the items that were discussed while the topic is still fresh on our minds, or allow citizens to ask questions before a vote after council discussion on issues. And the reason is, is that sometimes council members sometimes don't appear to listen to the staff when they answer questions, or they miss when the staff doesn't answer citizen questions clearly, or their answers amongst various staff members are contradictory to the other staff comments. So when this goes on, you know, we're sitting in the background, and we're like, he didn't answer my question. And we're not allowed then a chance to raise our hand and say, can you still answer the question? So this would allow citizens to speak before the vote happens, so the staff can again answer the question directly or provide clarity, or if they're providing contradictory statements to each other, this can get addressed before the council vote. As citizens, we shouldn't have to wait two weeks for the next council meeting to bring up what was discussed at a previous council meeting. So I'd like for the mayor and the council to consider either one of those two options for that. Second one is, at the previous council meeting, council member discussed about the Fourth of July show implying, making comments about how the city wouldn't pay for the show. And I don't recall ever asking or having heard anybody say that the city should pay for a show, even though I know the city's reserve and general fund balance are quite large and can easily handle that. I presented a few years ago, and I know it's too late now, maybe next year, about having a show. You know, I provided the location, the fireworks vendor, the costs associated for that. The show, if marketed correctly, could rival what some of the other smaller communities and semi-big communities like Clear Lake could offer. We could turn this into a really big deal. We do have a lot of vendors, or sponsors that actually support the Waterloo show that have a large presence in Cedar Falls, so there's no reason why we can't reach out and work with them to sponsor a show there. So I'd like the city in the future, possibly for next year, to consider a Fourth of July fireworks show. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharp. Does anyone else wish to speak in the forum today? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public forum and take us over to old business. And that starts with item three, passing ordinance 3011, amending Chapter 16, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of Ordinances relative to the use and explosion of consumer fireworks within the city limits upon its second consideration, or suspend the rules requiring ordinances to be considered at three separate meetings. This would require at least six aye votes, and pass the ordinance upon its third and final consideration. So does council have a preference on how to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Sires.
I'd like to see it go through all three readings. If people are offended by what we do, I like to give them as much of a chance as they can to come in and disagree or pitch their side. This isn't a life or death situation. I think it should go through the three readings like all of the others. Thank you.
So is there a motion?
Yes. I motion that we go with pass ordinance 3011, amending Chapter 16, on its second consideration.
Okay, it's been motioned.
Second.
Second. Motion and seconded. Open for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so we're in the item, then. There's not a question about suspending the rules at this point. So if you wish to talk further about the item itself, or we've had quite a bit of discussion about the fireworks ordinance. If, if this does pass, I would look to schedule a special meeting, because I would like to see this read and completed before our next meeting on June 6th, because at that point fireworks will already be sold. So we can have, it's not tied to this vote here, but just know that that's something that I will be looking to do. And if council is amendable, we would have a special meeting for that third reading. If council consensus is to not do that, then we would have it on the June 6th meeting for the final reading, if it passes tonight. So open, yeah, the floor's open at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Cruz.
I'm assuming the flyer is probably in draft form somewhere?
Very draft. Yeah, very draft.
A very draft?
A very draft, yeah. Not, not ready for.
Draft, draft?
Triple draft.
Okay. I, as far as I understand, our proposal is pretty much a mere image of Waterloo, unless I'm missing something. And they had a flyer already, so I don't know that there'd be, you know, we can, we can have the flyer, they can have the flyer. It's already pretty well set, so I, I'm not concerned with, you know. If you want to do a special meeting, we can do a quick Zoom meeting for five minutes and be done.
Well, that's not what's up tonight. I mean, certainly we could do that, but the big, I don't want to get people confused about what we're talking about.
Okay, I understand, but.
Okay, so there's that option, the question for the flyer.
When would you decide if we have a special session to, to a third reading?
After we take care of the second reading, then. So tonight, I think we would maybe, for Mr. Rogers, would there be any concern about us using that in the referral format to say, as we go to maybe council referrals, could we get a consensus at that time of having the third meeting, so that it's settled tonight, if this is approved tonight?
Whether or not you have it, or the date of their, uh?
Both.
I don't see a problem with a referral along those lines.
Okay. Yeah, if council doesn't object, we could, we'll deal with it tonight. So people would know by, by the time they leave tonight if we would have a special meeting, and when that would be, or if it would be June 6th. I think it's important that people know that early on.
Admin policy number seven establishes that the mayor sets council agenda. However, council has final approval over its agenda. So to put it directly in front of them in a referral basis seems to make sense to me.
Okay. All right. So good question. Thank you very much. Any other discussion for this? Okay, so seeing none, I'd open it up for public comment tonight. If you would like to speak on this item before the council takes a vote. Mr. White, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Roger White, 2303 Greenwood Avenue. Mr. Mayor and council members, I spoke to you, well, not, I spoke to this body, different people, but to this body in 2017, when this issue first came up. And the council saw the wisdom of not approving fireworks. In other words, passed the ban back in 2017. Two weeks ago, I spoke again, and I have made copies and provided copies, both of my 2017 remarks and my remarks from last week to the council previously. And so I'm not going to repeat them again, but every one of those points that I made with regard to how disruptive fireworks are, how they create animosity within the community, how they are really not necessary, all of those are still relevant, and I want you to continue to think about that. Now, I wasn't successful two weeks ago. I probably won't be tonight, but that doesn't mean I stop trying. I'm going a little different direction tonight, though, rather than repeating what I previously said. Section 16 of the code is what you're looking at tonight, but have you looked at section 15? Section 15 is the noise ordinance. And according to the noise ordinance, in a residential area, it will not exceed 55 decibels. Now, I don't do fireworks, but when I've heard fireworks, it certainly does exceed 55 decibels. Next door, across town, it exceeds 55 decibels. So if you continue with this, you're going to create one ordinance which conflicts with another ordinance. Now, under section 15, the noise ordinance, there are exemptions listed, whole list of them. I didn't see fireworks for an exemption in the list. There are variance permits possible, where you can get a permit to exceed the decibel limit. Are you going to require that all the people that are going to shoot off fireworks get the permit for the variance for your other ordinance? I hope so. My point is, don't do it. Reject this proposal. Stay with the ban. And I certainly appreciate the two council members who said, let's not push this through in, in one, one reading tonight. I thank you for that, Darrell, and Mr. Sires. Please reconsider. Don't pass a waiver of the ban. Keep the ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone else wish to speak? Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Tim Houts, 2128 Pleasant Drive.
Evening, Mr. Houts.
I was to here last week, our last meeting also, May 2nd. And I appreciate all the work put into the city governance. I know it's a tough job. After hearing the discussion at the last meeting regarding fireworks, I had several thoughts which I would like to share tonight. As you know, I am a combat veteran. I also served the young people in Cedar Falls as an educator and counselor for 32 years. My roots are here. Currently, my wife and I serve veterans a lunch every Thursday at the VA in Waterloo, and a picnic evening meal at the Vets Park in Cedar Falls on alternate Wednesdays. So in many ways, I am speaking for veterans in the Cedar Valley. When you discussed your meeting with the leaders in Waterloo, I got the impression that the fireworks issue became better when Waterloo went to a three-day event. If statistics were taken from city ordinance violations, I have to wonder if they took the pandemic into account. During the last two years, fewer people gathered and socialized because of COVID restrictions. Citations were down because the window was open for fireworks to be allowed for three days. I believe there were many in Cedar Falls who used fireworks and only did it when law enforcement wasn't looking, somewhat like speeding on our, many of our streets. If Cedar Falls ordinance is kept in place, the plenty, with plenty of education and media coverage, I believe we can keep a lid on most of the fireworks chaos. When a police car is parked on our street, people slow down and obey the speed limit. I believe in keeping Cedar Falls a welcoming community. We can make it a safe haven for those from Waterloo and elsewhere who don't like the use of fireworks in their neighborhood. They would be welcomed in Cedar Falls to get away and perhaps spend money here. If we get refugees from Ukraine, do you really want to surround them with fireworks? The U.S. is welcoming over 100,000 refugees from Ukraine. There's a good chance some will come to Cedar Valley. I would like to welcome them, instead of reminding them of war that they escaped. There are many reasons not to use fireworks, including young children, safety, veterans, accidental fires, the elderly, those with PTSD, those with pets, and more. There are good reasons to make Cedar Falls a safe haven for everyone. Keep the ordinance in place. Use the media to get the word out. Increase the presence of law enforcement, especially around the fourth, and perhaps promote neighborhood block parties to enjoy our neighbors and not get angry at them for disturbing the peace, or making the, making us breathe the sulfur-laced air after their explosions. Well, when Francis Scott Key wrote the poem, which became our national anthem on September 14th, 1814, remember that the British had occupied the District of Columbia? They had burned the Capitol. They had burned the White House and the Library of Congress. I don't think he was glorifying all the lost souls and property damage at Fort McHenry due to the rocket's red glare and the bombs bursting in air. If you read the, all four verses of the poem, he wrote that, that he wrote that day, you can get the sense of his concern for those at Fort McHenry who went through hell and survived. He speaks of the havoc of war, the battles of confusion, and the terror of flight and the gloom of the grave. But he was inspired by our flag, which survived and was, was flown after the devastating battle. He was eight miles away, out on another ship during the actual battle. So he didn't see much of, much from that distance. Combat veterans have no desire to relive rockets, red glare, and bombs bursting in air. We've seen enough. We just want to proudly wave Old Glory and peacefully visit with our good neighbors and show our pride in service to this great nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houts. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment tonight?
Good evening. Justin Bartlett, 4922 Addison Drive. My perspective is going to be different. I'm one of the partners in Crossroads Fireworks over Waterloo. And so first, I would like to commend you. I think this is a good ordinance. And I think, I think where, and by the way, I want to thank Mr. Houts for his service and for his, for his thoughts. I, I disagree with him, but I, you know, obviously, I want to honor him as a person and as a veteran. But anyway, I think the difference in opinion comes from, I think, the practical side. Because I think this gets framed as a disagreement between people who want to use fireworks and people who don't want to have fireworks around. And, and there is that disagreement. I mean, I sell fireworks. I like fireworks. But I also genuinely think that, and I think, I think this is where the council's coming from, too, with this. I also genuinely think that allowing a limited window of about, you know, three days in this case winds up being better, a better situation for those people. And I think that's what Waterloo has discovered, is that allowing those three days tends to confine the use to those three days and allows law enforcement to put their limited resources into, into enforcement for the rest of the time. And then people who are, you know, you have some people who, there are people who will never use fireworks. There are people who will only use fireworks if it's legal, and if it's not, then they just won't. And there are people who are going to use fireworks who would like to stay legal, but if it's banned, they're going to find some other time to do something. And those are the people where. And those are the people where I think the three-day window puts them into one spot. And so, you wind up with a whole lot less disruption the rest of that time. Because, you know, I recognize there's disruption to it. I understand that. I would love for it not to be the case, but it, you know, it is. So, yeah, I mean, I think the direction you're going is great. I think, you know, as much as a fireworks retailer, I would love to see 38, you know, the full 38 days that we sell, it'll be legal to use fireworks. That's not realistic in a densely populated area. It wouldn't be sustainable, et cetera. The other thing I would bring that I've mentioned in email to you guys before is our other, one of our other locations is in the Quad Cities, where Davenport and Bettendorf in 2018 did pretty much what Waterloo and Cedar Falls would be doing now. They allow the 3rd and 4th and the New Year's Eve. I don't have a strong opinion on, you know, which specific days makes sense. I think some points about weekends have some validity, maybe going forward at some point. But, but, but that's been, they have found that to be a stable situation. It doesn't keep coming up every year. And, like, there's not even discussion of a ban. It's been stable and good and not perfect. There's no perfect situation, no perfect solution. But they and Waterloo have, I think, all found it to be, found a limited window of a few days to be the best available solution to try to minimize the disruption as much as possible for people who have legitimate problems with fireworks, whether it's, whether it's, you know, combat veterans or whether it's things like mess or whatever, you know, pets, et cetera, et cetera. So I would urge you to move forward with it. I think it's a good, I think it's a good direction to go. And I think you'll find it to be a more stable and more workable long-term thing for the city, for residents, for law enforcement, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Sharp.
Rick Sharp, 1623 Burt Street. So, I'm just going to talk about, I'm sure you're all aware that the public is really leery about the city's efforts to enforce a zero tolerance ban based on previous history when we had a total ban on fireworks and there was really a lack of enforcement on the ban. So at the last council meeting, Acting Chief Howard and Acting Director Birdy both said they have a plan to address zero tolerance. So I'm asking, can they bring this plan forward to the council and the public either now or at the next council meeting for discussion and review and to ensure the public that there will be valid enforcement? The reason why I'm asking is at the last meeting, I've heard contradictions and about the enforcement from both of them. And I replayed the meeting and multiple times to listen to it. The acting chief said that he would accept eyewitness testimony that the fireworks were being shot off at a house, which would, i.e., result in probable cause. Whereas Acting Director said, "You have to catch them in the act of shooting or have video evidence," so to speak, "for the rules of evidence to make a citation stick." So again, I'm still confused as to what is acceptable for law enforcement to issue a citation. Now, as for charging the homeowner of the property or his discussion about that, Birdy said, "You need to prove the homeowner knew what was going on, even if they weren't there." But how is this different than the traffic cameras that ticket the owner of the vehicle, not the driver? Surely, the owner of the vehicle didn't know that the driver was going to be speeding or running red lights. Law enforcement supports the traffic camera model in charging the owner. But in this case, for fireworks, they seem to require a higher threshold of proof for charging the property owner of shooting off fireworks. So again, why the difference? The other reason why I like to see the plan that is out there is because it seems like there's some excuses for the lack of enforcement currently now and in the past. Comments were made like, "How long do you want to spend on the scene getting statements, interviews, issuing citations?" Because fireworks are still going off all over town and calls are still coming in. Another comment was made from the chief, "There are other things happening in the city. Calls are being put on hold, and we get there when we can." He also stated that officers, including himself, used officer discretion to not cite owners, especially when they spent a lot of money on fireworks. And this was when the ban was in place. How will a zero tolerance policy ensure officers are going to issue citations when in the past, under a ban, they didn't? Acting Chief also mentioned during last year, during the July 4th period, while he was on the second shift commander, there were 48 calls for service and 35 of them were for fireworks, that's 70% of the calls. Yet, he stated, "There's only four PSOs on patrol." First off, I'm like, why are these staffing numbers so low? These are numbers at the pre-PSO era. And now, we have more police officers than ever, and yet, the department still failed to upstaff like they do for Sturgis Falls and Homecoming for an event that the majority of the public finds annoying or disturbing. So where was that concern during the ban to upstaff and for, kind of, patrol the public and issue citations under a ban? So that's why this plan should be made available to the public. And we have some questions I'd like to have answered. We have 12 reserve officers on the department. Are they going to be utilized for this? If so, how many? If not, why not? Will the officers stage in certain problematic areas of town so there's a quicker response? If there's going to be overtime offered, how many of these officers are going to be eligible for the double and triple time that's going to be, that's allowed in their contract? And now, the fireside PSO is going to be used for patrol and response for issuing tickets. That is at least six additional personnel that are certified law enforcement officers. Remember, the cross-training was a primary reason we all went all PSOs. So if they are not going to be used, why not? So these are a few of the things that should be addressed and clarified before passing this resolution. Now, it was mentioned that the Waterloo police has seen a decrease in people shooting off fireworks since their policy is implemented. It should be noted that Waterloo has more officers on patrol each shift, so they're able to catch more people. So therefore, Cedar Falls should follow the same suit and have more than just four patrol officers on the shift. So as for the education aspect, the city needs to let the public know that they can report their neighbors even without video evidence or whatever is decided with the police department. Put that on the flyers. Let the homeowners know that they can get cited, even if they're not at home, but someone else is using their property, like family or friends, or they're there to shoot off the fireworks. Continue to ask for the public's help in reporting these events. And finally, when I brought this up two weeks ago at the last council meeting, is there any update on the sunset clause for those violations for shooting off multiple times in multiple years? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Do we have any other speakers for a couple of comment tonight? And we'll address those, only one time per...
I can't submit a petition.
Mr. Rogers? We don't typically have petitions, but...
He can submit to the clerk any writing he wishes to submit. Doesn't mean it's going to be considered here.
Okay, certainly, if you'd like to bring it forward. I'd like to see it, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have him read it, if we may, ask the council.
I'd like to see it first. Okay, yes, Mr. Houts, if you'd like to read it at the podium, it's totally fine. There we are. And note also which cities they're from. When you give them, yeah, which cities they're from.
I regret that I didn't bring this up before. This is what the petition reads. "To City Council, we, the undersigned, oppose the amending of City Fireworks Ordinance 1924, Chapter 16. Amending the current ordinance will create three days of chaotic firing of explosive devices in our neighborhoods, which will deeply affect combat veterans, many victims of PTSD, many parents with small children, the elderly, and many pet owners. With proper education and vigilant law enforcement, the current ordinance will keep the use of such explosive devices to a minimum." You don't want me to read the names, do you?
It's your petition.
Okay. I put this out on table when we did our dinners with the veterans. So I didn't really pump it up. I didn't go door-to-door. I just put it out on the table, let them read it, and sign it if they wish. 20 names on here.
Okay, so 20 names, right? And if you'd like, yeah, for a city clerk to have, we can receive and file that. Thank you. If any council members like to look at it, we can pass it around. And I'll note... For that, of those, let's see, one, two, is it 20 names? We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of the 20 from Cedar Falls. Just to be aware. Doesn't negate the value of the others, but just knowing for our constituency. So allow that to be passed around. Is anyone else wish to speak for public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, open it back up to council for continued discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Back to Mr. White's statement, do we have conflicting? I have a couple of questions on the nuisance. Is there going to be a conflict in the ordinance? I'm not completely familiar with the 15 and all of its verbiage. I know some of it, but like your input on it.
Sure. So if Cedar Falls were to attempt to enforce its noise ordinance against the use of consumer fireworks after the state of Iowa has allowed its use in all Iowa cities, it'd be unlawful because the state has preempted city action on that particular aspect of its noise ordinance.
Okay. So the ordinance is still in effect for loud mufflers or loud parties or other things that are loud, just the, or the law for fireworks supersedes the ordinance?
Well-stated.
Okay.
So should we, Mr. Rogers, update the exemptions in section 15?
We can. It's not necessary to make it lawful, but we can. Belt and suspenders.
So the state supersedes the city, in other words. And, but I second what Councilman Cruz, I would like to update that. My other question would be, 55 decibels, that's pretty low based off of, if you stand at a street corner and just hold a decibel meter, like, you're at generally around 80, just with surround noise. So anyway, something to think about for moving forward.
Some of Mr. Sharp's questions. For Acting Director Birdy, can you give the definitive sense for enforcement? And are you able to say specifically here what's allowed and legal or could be admissible as evidence in these sorts of cases? Or is this something you'd want us to come back or you'd want to discuss in writing later?
No, that's fine. You know, I think Mr. Sharp trying to split hairs on the enforcement, it's no different if it's minor possession of alcohol, if it's an assault. You know, this isn't TV, police work. It's, you know, you have to have evidence to support a citation. So we could, we could do it with a statement. We could do it with a video. We could do it with an officer's scene. It just has to go to, how much time are you going to spend on it? And remember, you're going to end up in court, and you have to testify or have evidence to prove that beyond a reasonable doubt in court. Now, you could write a lot of tickets that aren't great tickets and lose them in court, you know, but generally, we want to have evidence to support citations that we write. Doesn't matter if it's speeding, if it's minor possession of alcohol, possession of tobacco, all the same rules of evidence apply. So you can ask a question eight, 10, 15 different ways. And so, that's where he's getting caught up in. But the question about if it's a video, you know, if somebody has video and you say, "Yep, I took this video. That's my house in the video. You can see his yard in the video. That's the guy in the blue shirt. That's the same guy in the blue shirt." You put it together, you know, you spend a half hour there with another officer getting statements and put it together, absolutely, you could issue a ticket. But, you know, remember your time you've got from when it turns dark out to when the fireworks stop, do your best to try and enforce it. And you've only got so many officers, so...
I'll note, too, for me, the quandary is, as the city's chief executive officer, I'm responsible not for developing the policies. I can assist with that. It's up to the council ultimately to decide what the city's policies are going to be, and it's my charge to enforce them. So if the council doesn't approve this, if it were to vote it down, we would have to draconianly, if that's a word, enforce the fireworks law that's, the ban. And it is not going to be pretty in this city, I'll tell you. I think you can appreciate that. Trying to issue citations and having to ramp up drastically the law enforcement presence in the city over not just the three or four days around the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, but throughout that entire span of time that the fireworks can be sold. That's June 1st to July 8th. We are going to have to have, like, many, many more officers than we have on the streets now, and it's going to be very costly. So that's one of my concerns and why I thought that the limited window made more sense is to, as Councilman Gannfield mentioned a few weeks ago, I like the term of, like, letting off steam and allowing people to use fireworks. We're going, we're going to do it anyway. We'll only be able to dissuade so many people if they think they can get away with it. It's going to have to be a very, very heavy law enforcement push. And I just, I don't like that look for our city. So, Councilman Schultz.
So I'm just going to call you chief. So chief, what's the deterrent for people to not have fireworks displays or send off fireworks on the other days of the year if we have this trouble on the 3rd, 4th, and 5th of, we got to get evidence? And we, you know, it's hard to enforce. And what's the deterrent to keep people from going, you know what? The chief said himself that this is a hard one to enforce.
Well, you know, I think an important distinction, too, is that, you know, the enforcement has to take place, you know, kind of getting to Mr. Sharp's point. You know, we staff for Sturgis Falls, we staff for Homecoming. Well, those are pretty easy. You can staff for a two, three-day event. You know, this is really talking about doing fireworks enforcement from June 1st when it's going to be, it's legal to sell, you know, all the way through July. And having a staffing plan that's going to really take place. You know, people shoot off fireworks during the day. They especially shoot them off when it starts getting dark out. You know, so our goal would be to, you know, with the messaging, to get as much of the fireworks used during the 3rd, 4th, and 5th when it's legal. You know, to kind of back up to something Councilman Cruz asked about earlier, one of the reasons we want to know before June 1st, and I'll just tell you some of the things we're working on with the city's communications team, is signage for the Cedar Falls tents where they're selling fireworks, brochures that'll go with every sale, Channel 15 messaging. We've already done our interviews. Channel 15's doing a story. Social media messaging, I know the communications team with the city's working on that. Signage for electronic messaging boards, like at the pool, rec center, you know, probably others I can't think of. Signage for some of the arterial intersections, we plan on putting signage out. Because our goal is to get as much of the fireworks into that legal three-day window if the council passes it. But to your question, the challenge of issuing citations, it's the same all the time. It's not just on the 3rd, 4th, 5th.
So do you intend to increase from four patrol to more on any of these days?
Sure, we would. And we'll have to do it through the use of reserves, through the use of paying overtime. I mean, that's the only way to come up with people. We can use public safety officers that are assigned to the fire division to help issue citations. But that's always a balancing act, like it always is. You've also got to have a certain amount of people to man the trucks and get the trucks to a fire if you have a fire, so...
So, you know, I've already voiced my, you know, from the concerns that veterans have, pet owners, people with small children. But, you know, this is something that is for everyone, you know? So we got to balance that. Maybe this three-day is that, that middle ground that we're always trying to find. I've mentioned this before in our joint meeting, and people kind of foofooed it, but what, how would we approach an over-enthusiastic display where it goes on for 30 minutes or 40 minutes or whatever? Is, you know, what can we do about that? Or is it just that's part of their right under this ordinance?
Are you talking about during the legal hours?
During the legal hours.
You know, I would view that as being legal if it's occurring during the 3rd, 4th, and 5th during those hours. Now, if we got, you know, an excessive amount of complaints or you're talking trash, or like Mr. White said, you know, maybe the wind has taken the sulfur and the smoke a certain direction, the police absolutely would do our best to deal with it. But that is, that could be a unique challenge during the legal time because they could also sit there saying, "I'm legal," and keep firing them off, too.
Yes, Mr. Rogers.
Following up on that, and I guess this might be more for Mr. Rogers, that if I'm a neighbor of somebody shooting off fireworks for an hour straight, somewhere you cross the line of peaceful enjoyment of my own property. Do you not?
So council, if it approves this, is going to be making that decision. And the decision is, during those hours, fireworks, use of consumer fireworks is lawful. That's the policy decision.
That's the definition of peaceful enjoyment of the neighbors. The neighbor can shoot off fireworks for an hour straight.
Absolutely.
That's my, okay.
For 10 hours straight.
72 hours straight.
Nope.
Well, there's a break.
You'd have to stop overnight.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, so that, and also, that surge part, too, of when it would happen wouldn't just be the days surrounding, but also to the point of the hours. 10:00 PM, I think there'd have to be a surge out, like, 9:55 or so, you've got officers out watching and seeing when it's, because you're going to have people violating it. 11 o'clock on the 4th, and then again on the 5th, 10 o'clock. And I would see before that time, too, if they're shooting off at 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM, they're going to get cited as well on those days. So I would see that as a, as a... they're going to get cited as well on those days. So I I would see that as a as a much higher level of, uh, officer presence on those days as well, because that's when they're, it seems like that's when they're most likely to do it. Uh, but continuing, so more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Councilwoman Dunn.
I don't know that I'm going to say much, because, you know, I I think I said what I needed to say at our last meeting, but I will say this again, that I believe that the intent for this, you know, I've had people say, why all of a sudden did this come up? I I wish in hindsight, maybe this conversation could have happened last summer after we got through, like, you know, immediately after we got through the June, July type, uh, uh, time period, so that we knew it was fresh in our mind, uh, of how it is with the ban. Um, but it's not, you know, it's it's happening now, and that's fine. Um, I do recall, though, uh, during that time period, receiving phone calls and emails and all the ways of communication. Of course, I'm at large, so I might receive, you know, because the whole city is is my territory. Um, so, you know, the ban, ban, uh, is not working. I will say it again, I know people don't like that. Uh, what I went and took from our neighbors, who, um, there's another thing that I I don't like, when we, we need to think big, and in meeting with our neighbors, uh, and discussing policy, I think is a great move, so I'm I'm proud of that, that when they had a similar problem, and and again, these are coming from council people, when I listen to them speak, they are not pro fireworks people. They were dealing with the same thing, where they had upset constituents and and citizens, and so they tried something different. And there's something different seems to be working for them. I am not here to make anybody upset. I am not here to, I mean, if I could make everybody happy all the time, uh, that'd be great. But I think we're here to try something different. I think zero tolerance was a huge point that was made, uh, by the the mayor during that discussion. There's no if, ands, or buts. E- everybody gets the ticket. If you're if you're in violation, you get the ticket. Um, I think another thing that's different than ours is we have the escalation. So it's what, three?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, then five hundred?
Thousand.
Then a thousand. And I don't know if we clarified that yet. If if somebody got one, like, one year, and then like a couple of years later, would they automatically move up to the five hundred? There's no sunset clause or something?
It doesn't get expunged from your record, so.
Okay, so you you keep climbing. So if I want to be a royal jerk, I could collect maybe in one season, I could collect thousand, thousand, thousand. I mean, you just keep getting thousand-dollar tickets after you hit the third one, right?
Correct.
Okay. I know, I I I'm rambling, I wasn't going to really even say anything, but I I do take offense when people call me not empathetic. Obviously, I live a life of empathy uh, by the job I do, so I I do have a problem with that. Uh, it is, I think, and this is me just speaking, uh, I I don't live to disappoint anybody. Um, and I'm sorry, uh, but I I want to make sure that I don't regret this vote, and I'm not doing it to hurt anybody. I'm doing it to try to make the situation better. Um, and there's always a chance to go back. If we if we learn, I think we should give it at least a couple of years if it does does pass to see how it might work. If we need to go back, we can. But that is what I have to say, I guess.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunn. Anyone else wish to speak on council? Okay. Um, I'll note, too, from from my own opinion, I probably to the the not joy of fireworks vendors, I would very much love to see fireworks not allowed to be sold in our community. And when that day comes, that the state legislature allows us to regulate the sale of fireworks in Cedar Falls, you will see me bring forward a request to have the ban reenacted, uh, for both sale and for, um, for use. But until that time, as we've said many times in the past in this, these kinds of meetings, is that we're kind of stuck with what we're given, the deck of cards we're given by the state. So, uh, with that, uh, any final questions or thoughts? So seeing none, then I would say, uh, the motion on the floor is to pass, and seconded, pass, uh, Ordinance three eleven, amending Chapter sixteen offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of Ordinances relative to the use and explosion of consumer fireworks within the city limits upon its second consideration. That's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
Cruz?
Nay.
Harding?
Aye.
Gannfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Five voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that passes this reading and takes us, um, into a final reading that will be required. At the end of this council meeting, uh, it seems most appropriate, we'll handle that as a referral. So I would just take it in the the flavor of referral from a council member to propose a date, um, and then we can we can decide, uh, at the end of the meeting, when we are going to have this final reading, whether it'll be at a special meeting, uh, prior to, um, June sixth, or if it will be on June sixth, that our next regular council meeting. So thank you very much for everyone, uh, for your opinions and for, uh, providing input, and certainly we do take that under, uh, close consideration. So with that, that takes us over to the consent calendar. These items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion, uh, without separate discussion, unless someone from the public or council requests that a specific item be considered separately. Uh, does any council member request to pull an item four through eight? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item four through eight? Also seeing none. Um, so I'll read those items. Item four is approving recommendations of the mayor relative to appointments of members to boards and commissions. Item five is receiving and filing joint work session minutes of April twenty-sixth. Uh, six is receiving and filing council committee of the whole minutes of May second relative to stormwater rate increases and the standing committee customary procedures. Item seven is approving applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, and vapor permits. And then finally, eight is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve these items?
So moved, second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those do pass and mass, and it takes us over to the resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. And we do certainly invite people to bring up items if they'd like to discuss. Um, yeah, we already have item sixteen removed from the agenda, so uh, does any council member request to pull an item nine through twenty-six?
Speaker number thirteen.
Number thirteen for Councilmember Cruz. Okay, any others from council? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item, uh, nine through twenty-six? Seeing none. So I will read those remainder of items and then bring us back to item thirteen once that's done. Um, item nine is a resolution naming official depositories for the city of Cedar Falls. Ten is a resolution approving and adopting the city's FY twenty-three appropriations resolution. And to Jennifer Staff, thank you so much for all the work to get that to us. Um, item eleven is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a lease for vacant city-owned property located at twenty-five seventeen Cedar Heights Drive. Item twelve is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of Amendment one to the subaward agreement for the Homeland Security Emergency Management Division's extension of the voluntary property acquisition program, uh, funded through a hazard mitigation grant, and this is relative to the northern Cedar Falls flood buyout program. Fourteen is a resolution approving the Cove at Spruce Hills Platte, or Minor Platte, or Platte One, Minor Platte. Fifteen is a resolution approving a planned residence zoning district site plan relative to proposed multi-residential development in the vicinity of Green Hill Road and Spruce Hills Drive. Uh, item seventeen is a resolution receiving and filing approving and accepting the bid of Owen Contracting in the amount of, uh, five hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and six cents for the twenty-twenty-two alley reconstruction project. Item eighteen is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Peterson Contractors for the West Twenty-seventh Street Reconstruction Project. Nineteen is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a stormwater maintenance and repair agreement with the Cove at Spruce Hills LLC relative to a post-construction stormwater management plan for the Cove at Spring Hills. Twenty is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Aspro for the College Hill Parking Lot Improvements Project. Twenty-one is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of supplemental agreement number one to the professional services agreement with ACOM for acquisition services relative to the Northern Cedar Heights Area Reconstruction Project Phases one and two. Twenty-two is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of twenty-seven owner purchase agreements and approving and accepting twenty-seven temporary construction easements in conjunction with the Center Street Corridor Streetscape Project. Twenty-three is a resolution receiving and filing and setting June sixth, twenty-twenty-two, as the date of a public hearing on the proposed planned specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Center Street Corridor Streetscape Project. I'm so glad to have that moved forward. Twenty-four is a resolution setting June sixth, twenty-twenty-two, as the date of public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and issuance of not to exceed three point two million dollars general obligation capital loan notes for essential corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Twenty-five is a resolution setting June sixth, twenty-twenty-two, as the date of public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and issuance not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars general obligation capital loan notes for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. And finally, twenty-six is a resolution setting June sixth, twenty-twenty-two, as the date of public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and issuance not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars general obligation capital loan notes for the general corporate purposes, GCP two, and providing for publication of notice thereof. Is there a motion for approval of these items minus?
So moved.
Number thirteen.
Second.
And seconded, and all requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gannfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us back to item thirteen, which is a resolution approving and adopting the Cedar Falls Bicycle Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion seconded, Councilmember Cruz, you have some comments on?
Yeah, just a quick thank you for the bike committee developing the plan and doing the modifications that, uh, I guess I brought up and other people concurred. Uh, I'm curious, again, on that evidence that, uh, I call it the Fitbit thing, whatever that tracking device is.
The Strava app, I think you're.
Something like that, yeah. Um, I I just wonder how many, if there's a way, or how many people don't have such devices? I mean, I've done thirty rag rides in across the country, and I don't have the device. So, um, you know, if we can track, uh, a solution for Twelfth Street, you know, I was looking at Thirteenth Street, we talked about Eleventh, and it would be probably up to public works someday when we redevelop those other streets that are parallel to Twelfth and Eighteenth to improve the bikeability for the recreational biker, not just the one that can keep up with the traffic at twenty-five or thirty, so. But I thank you for coming up with that modification, so that's all I had.
Any other questions or comments on the bicycle plan? Any from the public? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
Rick Sharp, sixteen twenty-three, Burke Street. So again, this is on number thirteen. Uh, based on the new bike lane map, I didn't see a lot of detail on the plans on the website, the city website, and I tried to scrutinize everything I saw on there. So a couple of things that popped out to me, I just would like to have some answers on for that. So on the proposal, will Waterloo Road from University Avenue to Main Street be put on a road diet from four lanes to two lanes? Likewise, will the same happen to Eighteenth Street from Waterloo to Main Street? Um, if so, when will this happen? Do we have projected costs, especially since Waterloo Road from Highway fifty-eight access road to Main Street already is, has a bike lanes off to the side of the four-lane road? Uh, my concerns are, um, you haven't seen traffic in the morning and after work at the Highway fifty ramps and wa- with cars at the stoplights backed up at Newman, um, on Waterloo Road backed up past Newman Road up to the strip mall, and that's with four lanes of traffic. So sometimes for me, it's tough to make a right turn off of Newman to get onto Waterloo Road with the traffic and head in that direction, and you definitely cannot make it on that first light. So I can't imagine what it'll be like if the plan is to put it on a road diet, to have one lane in each direction. Um, obviously, I'm not a big fan of road diets. To me, the number, I mean, I bicycle, but the number of cyclists in the community year round, I'm not talking about summer when weather's nice, doesn't justify the need to convert all these heavily traveled traveled roads in main arterial from four lane to two lanes, especially since the cyclists, we already have the right to the road. So, yeah, any clarification on these road diets from converting Waterloo Road and Eighteenth Street to four lanes to two lanes, we'd be appreciated.
Sure. And and just for clarification, the four lane to two lane, actually, is it more a four lane to three lane? Because you do have that center turn lane still connected. So just want to make sure folks didn't think that we were just dropping to two in the plan. So, Mr. Steve, you want to comment?
Okay. Yes, I'll I'll comment as I'll comment on that. Um, so yes, there is some discussion about, uh, doing a road diet, as he as he mentioned, on Waterloo Road. And what was the other?
It was the, uh, Eighteenth and to Waterloo to Main Street.
Eighteenth from Waterloo to Main Street. Um, I'm not aware of any discussion on that. Well, for for a road diet, I'm not aware, so. Um, but yes, um, again, that's that's all preliminary. I can't speak for the engineering department on that front, um, since that's more their realm, so.
Yeah, and also, just like, uh, other items that come forward, uh, if that change did occur, just like with, uh, the Main Street change, that would have to come before council for approval. So just adopting the plan, um, is a, it's an aspirational and and, um, planning document, but still requires final council approval of the funds and the designs to make those those official changes. So just because it's in the plan doesn't mean it's it's absolutely going to happen. Things may change, may not have the money available, things like that. So stay tuned, is all I'd say for that. Uh, Councilman Harding?
I would note a specific example of that with the adopted bicycle plan from last time noted, I believe, a while ago, of a bike lane going all the way down Eighteenth, I believe it was, or or Twelfth, I can't remember, but we decided due to parking that we couldn't do that. And so we went against it, so. But yet, we had already adopted the plan. So that's a good example. I just wanted to cite that shows that we're always continuously adjusting the pieces based on what's in front of us.
Thank you, yes. It's not legally binding. We get in trouble if we don't do aspects of it. Okay, so other thoughts? Anything else to add in? All right, so, uh, with that, uh, item thirteen is resolution approving and adopting the Cedar Falls Bicycle Plan. It's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gannfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us out of resolution calendar and over into uh, new ordinances. That's item twenty-seven. This is to pass an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-four utilities of the Code of Ordinances relative to stormwater rates upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and do we have a thirty-second infomercial from staff on what this is going to?
Sure. So on May second, um, we gave a presentation at committee to talk about proposed stormwater, um, increases, and we had explained about how those were necessary due to all the projects on the CIP and, um, you know, forecasting stresses on that fund. So we, um, came with a proposal to increase the rate seven percent each year, and, um, you know, kind of showed what those impacts are for the average homeowner. Um, also noted that these will affect commercial stormwater rates as well, and that, um, we'll use that same method of how we calculate it based on impervious area. So, um, the ordinance for tonight, um, does put in that seven percent increase over the next, or each year for the next five years.
Okay, thank you, Director Renbeck. Council questions or comments? Particularly questions. They seeing none. Does anyone from the public have questions or comments on the item? Okay, also seeing none. So final chance for council. Great. So, uh, this is already a motion and seconded to pass the ordinance amending Chapter twenty-four utilities of the Code of Ordinances relative to stormwater rates upon its first consideration and requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gannfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Nay.
Dunn?
Aye.
Five voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And takes us to bills and claims. Is there a motion to bill approve bills and claims?
So moved, second.
A motion and seconded. Any discussion? Any from the public? So motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gannfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, for council referrals tonight, uh, this is where I would entertain that idea for, uh, if a councilor would like to have a special meeting, uh, to resolve the the third reading of the fireworks ordinance, feel free to bring forward a motion now. Otherwise, uh, it will occur at our June sixth meeting. So would there be a desire for a motion to have it sooner in a special meeting?
Sure. Motion to have a special meeting on, I'll just, for the sake of conversation, say Friday, May twentieth, to vote only on the third reading of the fireworks ordinance.
If if I could do a friendly amendment on it?
Sure.
Um, I just learned in Robert's rules, we can do a blank, so if you want to say.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, so to have a special meeting.
I'll withdraw that motion, and I will say, or referral, and I will say referral to have. to have a special meeting for the third reading of the fireworks ordinance on May blank.
Second. Okay, motion and seconded, open for discussion of the date.
My, I wanted to talk about reasoning for this. I think that to have literature to come out and to have things posted prior to having the ordinance in effect is inappropriate, so I would really like to see a special meeting to see, allow people to speak, see if this goes through, then publish the materials rather than have materials published and put them out there on June 1st without having the ordinance fully in effect. I just don't believe that's right.
Okay, other thoughts from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Sires?
I believe that the three readings should be at regular council meetings. That's kind of how it's written in, to have a special meeting is almost no different than having them both in the same reading, so I would be against that. That's all.
Okay. So any other sense pro or con for having it as a special meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Is this a good time to propose a date of that said meeting? Some of us will be involved in city council duties already on Wednesday, May 25th. Wondering, so that we don't have staff and us as humans tied up multiple nights, if we could maybe think about just doing the meeting after that final interview?
So would that, those interviews will be at the Public Safety Building, so would that be?
Well, I mean, even if we had to zoom over here, I could be here in 10 minutes.
The only conflict could be mayor is that's planning and zoning evening, so we'd have to watch the time.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, it's just a thought, but.
I have work after that, too.
Okay.
And I'm already taking off work to do the other stuff, so taking off two works is kind of tough.
Sure.
So maybe it'd be a good idea to have it at the regular next meeting.
I'd be okay with that, but then how do you, do you just put out literature starting on June 6th? I'm okay with waiting until June 6th, I just don't want to put literature out before the ordinance is law.
So as Director Birdie mentioned, we are, actually have a full-on campaign, ready to go with informational, information that were, as he said, pamphlets, posters, yard signs, social media campaign, all of those things kind of ready to go. But until the third reading is read and passed, we will not launch anything. So the soonest we would start putting that stuff up would be the day following that.
Well, that's fine.
So doing it on the 6th would not change anything legally, except that if there's a violation in Cedar Falls for somebody shooting off fireworks on the 1st, when they first can get them, up to the 6th, if it were approved, it'd be a criminal offense of, and then a fine of 300 or $250. So can you talk about the criminal offense side of it?
It would be the old ordinance, and it wouldn't matter what the date is, it could be tonight, it would be the old ordinance.
Okay. So that, I mean, that's okay for the, not having the flyers out, the public already knows that it's illegal, or they're not allowed to do it, it's just when it's going to become legal. And we just would wait to put out our information until June 6th then, if that's the case.
I can go either way with it, as long as we're putting the information out the day after, I'm happy.
All right.
It's up to council.
I agree with Councilman Sires that we're in a rock and hard place, right? But we can't keep just making concessions because, well, we're in a rock and hard place. Let's follow the, what we're, yeah, does it look like we're down the road of this is going to be the new ordinance? That's what it's looking like, but I think we should follow the procedure.
And we're at second reading, or past second reading, so at least we, like, there's the trajectory that people know probably I need to follow, or keep an eye out for what's going to happen with Cedar Falls. Councilor Cruz?
I too agree with Mr. Sires. It's illegal to shoot until, well, never right now, but then not until the 3rd, so either way, whether you buy them on the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, or 5th, 6th, until the 7th, the flyer pops out, the social media, I'm fine with it. We don't need a special meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The only difference, I think, would be for the vendors, the retailers, there wouldn't be a requirement to provide information for sales until the ordinance is finally adopted.
That's right, so they don't need to do anything.
They don't have to do anything, just like they never have had to do anything in Cedar Falls.
Okay.
That's another distinction.
Mr. Mayor? Was it going to be, though, like, are we gonna, weren't we going to have the flyers say, is it going to make it so that they have stuff that the city, our neighbors have already given out, and then we're going to come in with our new stuff? I'm not saying that's the end of the world, but that's one thing that I think the reason why we were gonna, because we were going to kind of collaborate on that flyer, weren't we?
And we're not going to be able to.
Okay, so then, is the same information that we talked about, which was kind of a collaborative-type flyer, like, when we go to, you know, if everything passes and it goes out, will we be replacing the flyers that are there so it's consistent, is what I guess I'm asking? You know what I mean? They're going to already have their flyers out, are we going to like, kind of maybe give them a few extra flyers so that we match and we're consistent?
Where are we going to have a joint flyer that says Waterloo, Cedar Falls, or is the one that you're all preparing is, here's the Cedar Falls rule?
So the flyer that's drafted now, I think the mayor has seen a couple drafts of it, has a city logo on it now, city Cedar Falls logo. We actually have that over to Waterloo for them to review it and see if they want to add their logo, and we're more than happy to add that logo if they choose not to and go with a different flyer, that's fine, but we will have that with our city logo that's ready to be launched.
Okay, so motion on the floor is to have a special meeting at X date. You could propose a date and then vote it up or down if you'd like?
Isn't that blank right now, Mr. Mayor? It's blank.
It's blank.
It's blank now.
Unless they withdraw the referral, that would be the easy thing.
I mean, there's no sense in worrying about a flyer. I get it, in a perfect world, let's do a flyer, but it seems like enough of council wants to wait, and I'm okay with waiting, so I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so that, next, yeah, it'll be June 6th then for the next reading. So any other referrals for tonight? All right, seeing none, then open for council updates. Anything to pass for this evening? I'll note tomorrow, 10:00 AM is the Veterans Hall service, it's the Peace Officers Memorial Service that occurs every year, very meaningful, very touching ceremony for the public, certainly welcome and invited to attend, and for any council member or staff who can attend as well, it's quite the tribute. So that'll be tomorrow, 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Veterans Hall in downtown Waterloo, right on the riverfront. Any other information to pass from council? Okay, seeing none, then from staff, anything we need to pass tonight from?
No, sir.
Okay. So I would also like to make a note, this is Police Week, so our thoughts and prayers to families of those who've lost their loved ones in the line of duty for law enforcement, and to then celebrate Public Works Week as well. And with that, I would say we have a need to go to executive session, it's item 29, but we have to have that approved by council first. So item 29 is an executive session for the annual discussion of the city administrator's performance pursuant to Iowa Code Section 2151, or I, 1I, and City Code Section 2217. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and all in, or this requires a roll call vote.
Schultz?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So for council and for Mr. Gaines and Mr. Rogers, we'll be going over to the conference room over at the library, and then this meeting basically is done, but we do have to come